For you also, but listen very closely because the next voice you will hear will be that of Mayor Gary E Norton himself. Mayor Norton!
So one thing Gary has asked is that he's gonna be sharing some things with you that are not out for publication yet. So we're gonna invoke, it's okay to keep taping Steve, but we're gonna invoke a cone of silence here this morning. With Las Vegas, what's said here stays here, okay?
Thank you all for abiding by the rule that what happens here stays here. Kind of a silly thing to say when there's a videotape going, but that's okay. And, uh, but you know, the only exception to that would be you can tell people with power, influence and money if you wish, the things that we say today. So one of the things you've guessed I'll talk with you about today is my plan to participate in the merger potentially, hopefully, cross my fingers, of the city of East Cleveland with the city of Cleveland. I'm crazy? Oh, I'm half crazy, which for East Cleveland mayors, half crazy is an improvement. But I am half crazy. For me, it is, it is a political suicide walk. I'm doing something that today is unpopular among my own constituents. By the way, they decided to try to recall me last week. Anybody who, yeah, I'll sign the petition myself right now. I don't care. Basically, I'm signing it through going through this process. There is demand for about 3,000 units of housing in and around University Circle, but the place is pretty much landlocked. We offer immediate and accessible, low-cost, shaky ownership, tax delinquent, all sorts of things. Land, all the good stuff that you guys like, right? Black folks don't, get this, you know, I'm kidding by the way, no, I'm not really kidding. We have told some of the statewide, not the legislative and things like that, but some of the statewide office holders, what we intend to do and how long the process will be. What I love about Republicans, you know what they said? "Don't with them. You want us to change the law?" I love it. I mean, I'm a Democrat, I'm black, I'm trying to figure out how to work with no money. They just want to change the law. I'm like, okay, that's fine. Yes, we do our debt, but we don't have much. Our debt, for the most part, is because we bought stuff and we didn't pay people for it, which is bad, which is bad. Uh, you know, unless, you know, you don't wanna get paid for the things you gave. Murder is what I'm advocating. It's all a secret right now, but if you know people with power and influence just like yourselves, feel free to talk about it with yourself.
Man, you are fantastic. Around against the toxic dump. Now listen, if we have to go further to talk about this mayor, this mayor sound, uh, signed off on this toxic dump. It's a cancer causing health hazard for children and elderly residents of East Cleveland, including, Lord have mercy, y'all hear me good on the Sunday, y'all coming from church? Because I know you prayed good and I know the preacher good preached good and I know you put in a good donation. But I want y'all to hear this real good. This toxic dump, right there at Noble Road in Euclid. If you all don't know where it's at, then just ride past Noble Road in Euclid and look over to your left. Or if you're coming the other way, look to your right. You'll see this big massive toxic dump. You won't believe it. And the worst thing about it, you won't believe that a hundred and eighth year old lady live in one of those houses right behind the toxic dump. I'm telling you right now, we were in her yard and an avalanche of toxic, like an avalanche, that's how high it is, came rolling down in her backyard. Melanated media news got it on, on video. And you know what? That's the reason we're in this fight so hard, because she said, "Brother McCoy, I'm a hundred and eight, I've been doing alright. Uh, my faculties are good, but I can't, I can't talk too good because this toxic dunk is choking me to death." Y'all get to marry somebody out here. That was two years ago. They ain't came, you know why they ain't came? Because they're part of the problem. Either you're part of the solution or you're a part of the problem. Either you're getting paid or you're getting played, one of the two. Listen, I ain't gonna lie to you on the radio. Listen, I don't plan on being on the radio forever. It's just like I don't plan on living forever, but one thing you let them know, that the Art McCoy University Radio Show, keep it real and sometime we make it rain. And I tell you what, there's nothing that I've said so far that is not factual. You heard it live, you heard this Thomas talking live to some suburbanites telling them that black folks don't know the value of land and he got some good land that they can get. He was scratching his head and doing the buck dance and them suburbanites were loving it. Listen, this is live radio. I'm keeping it real, y'all heard it? If you need to see the video itself of him scratching and, and buck dancing to, to these suburbanites telling them that they got some real cheap land in East Cleveland, he's the broker of it, black folks don't know what good land is and all they gotta do is come in and talk to him. And he'll make sure these suburbanites get this good land and run these black folk that don't know nothing about this land. These black folks have been there for 50, 60 years, homeowners. We'll make sure y'all get this land, run the taxes up so high and run them out of town. Demetrius, talk to me quick.
Okay, I just wanted to call, uh, I can understand, you know, the young lady that's gotta look young, but you have some people out here who is vicious and people at a young age and you can't have people, people can't walk to the store, they can't go to work without getting robbed, without getting killed. So I'll tell you, I have to send a message to people, like you've been trying to talk to folks, they, hard as hard, they don't wanna listen. They gonna continue to do the same thing that they've been doing and people wanna feel safe when they walk out their door. And if people don't wanna listen, what is committed crimes, you gotta get them off the street. And if they go to prison, you know, if they're young enough, they gonna come right back out, they not gonna be held guilty. So if somebody doing the same crimes over and over, you're gonna have a choice. People wanna feel safe in the schools, the younger children feel safe in the schools, people feel safe going to work, going to the store and people in their homes.
Demetrius, I, Demetrius, I have a question to ask you. Uh, how old are you?
I'm in my, my late 40s.
Okay, that's alright. If you're a hundred, it don't make me no difference. I just asked a question. I, we, we not gonna put you on live screen so that people ain't gonna know who you are. So, uh, on your journey to walk into the store and, and places you go, if you see a bunch of young black men, are you intimidated by them?
They say again, sir?
If you're walking to the store or to the bus or wherever you might be going, if you see a bunch of young black men, are you intimidated by them?
Oh, no, 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 I'm not.
Wait, wait, okay, alright, alright, okay, hold on, hold on.
I'm gonna protect myself from anybody, no, I try to avoid.
Alright, let me, let, okay, let me ask you a question. I'm not, uh, I'm not, I'm not trying to make a scary guy out of you. So if you see a bunch of young men, uh, on 116th and you're walking that way on the same side of the street, would you, are you gonna move on to the other side of the street?
Okay, yes, I'll move on the other side of the street.
Alright, so you're, so you're, so you're all a little, so you're all a little intimidated, are you all a little intimidated, right? I'm not saying that's wrong, Demetrius, I'm just saying, because the opening statement-
Something you can avoid.
Alright, so, so you-
If I have to go somewhere, I'm not gonna be scared to go.
Alright, so-
It's a free country and nobody gonna run you up the block if I have to go somewhere.
Alright, okay, brother, 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 Demetrius, thank you for your phone call. I love you. Who's on the phone line talking? So we're gonna, let's talk about intimidation at the polls. December 6th election. Uh, it happened in East Cleveland when Mayor Norton, when Mayor Norton claimed to have been assaulted by a young man named, uh, claimed to have been assaulted and intimidated by a young man named Devin Branch, who was also at the polls. Uh, the polling place was at Heritage School and, uh, what Mayor Norton accused Devin Branch of assaulting him had the chief of police himself, not a patrolman, uh, not a lieutenant, but the police himself, the police chief himself. Zerello came out and, and made sure the charges went through on Devin Branch and later on, uh, they arrested Devin Branch, gave him a $10,000 bond. Do you believe this? Uh, and Devin Branch is out now, but the fact of the matter is, I'm gonna tell you what happened. I'm gonna tell you clearly what happened. Listen, the mayor is known to intimidate voters in East Cleveland at the polls. Uh, the polling places themselves letting Mayor Norton go inside the polls and, and do what he gotta do to intimidate. And he's a very strong intimidating force at the polls. So he was talking to an individual and, uh, Devin Branch was also passing out literature. And so he knew the individual too, so he went to hand the individual a piece of literature and, and, uh, Mayor Norton, uh, clipboard, uh, uses clipboard to kinda put in Devin Branch's face. And before you know it, the clipboard, uh, had failed and because of this little petty stuff, Mayor Norton, Lord have mercy, a coward dies a thousand times, a brave man lives forever. Lord have mercy, he called the chief of police and put a warrant on this man for assault. How petty can you get, man? That's not, that's not police stuff, that's man-to-man stuff. That's what kind of mayor we got in East Cleveland, to put a man in jail like this. That's not the first time he did that. You know, at, at one time I was, I was a staunch advocate for, uh, no guns. Yeah, uh, that was, you know, I was on that side, you know, less guns, the better off we are. But I have come to understand that that is not the world we live in now. Uh, and in my estimation, everybody that don't have a gun is looking for a gun and want a gun. And it's just gonna be one big armed society. Now where'd it, where'd that take us? Huh? That's reality. I, I don't know where that's gonna take us, but, but hey, so, so it doesn't matter. They say, well, I talked to a young man, I said, "Young man, you know, what do you have, what do you need with a gun?" He said, "Look, everybody else got one." The Art McCoy University Radio Show, we keep it real and sometime we make it rain. Oh!
What's the going price for a soul nowadays?
Lord have mercy. Listen, Ward 3 councilperson Thomas Wheeler. Let me ask you one question and I can tell you if you're gonna vote yes to get him out or not. Have you seen him, I'm talking about councilperson Thomas Wheeler? Have you seen him on your street or in your neighborhood? I'm gonna ask you one more time. We're talking about Ward 3 residents, we're talking about Thomas Wheeler, councilperson Thomas Wheeler. Have you seen him on your street or in your neighborhood in the last three years? Now look, if the answer is no and you know how your neighborhood is and you know how distressed it is and you're tired of your car being hit by them potholes and you're tired of the abandoners and, and, and the drugs and everything, overgrown fields and everything plaguing Ward 3, then look, you got to vote him out. Because the only time you see some of these politicians like Wheeler is on the election. What good is it to gain the world and lose your soul? This is going out to Gary Norton. What good is it to gain the world but lose your soul? To some serious talk, listen, 10 members of the commission set up to oversee reform of Cleveland Police Department has asked the president of the Department Lodges Union to step down from the commission. The members asked Steve Loomis, President of Cleveland Police Patrolman Association, to voluntarily resign from the Cleveland Community Police Commission because the repeated absence from the committee meetings. Lord have mercy. You hear that? 10 out of the 13 members say, "Loomis, it's time for you to quit." Brother, just quit. Quit! Because you're really a distraction to this whole reform committee. Look like you're, you're, you're on the other side. Look like your job is to try to destroy this oversee committee. So they're asking Loomis to resign. Uh, I hope that those in charge, whether it's, uh, whether it's Mayor Frank Jackson or a federal judge, uh, this man gotta go, let's face it. Even the commissions have went against it. Now remember that we are on the, always on the cutting edge of things and we're the first ones that, uh, even protest, uh, in front of Loomis at some of those commission meetings when he was first going. Tell him that, "Loomis, you need to go, man. You're not a, you know, if you're easy a part of the problem, a part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Just give it up and go and let's try to make this thing work." So we were on the cutting edge. Now others have came in, uh, the same way. You know, I, I mean, really, you know, if Loomis stays on that board, the consent decree might as well, it's a joke. It's gonna be the same thing as always, nothing happened and that's the end of that. Since we're talking about police union chief, we have another article that comes out of the Cleveland Plain Dealer. Says, uh, he was suspended over altercations. It says that the president, the president of the Cleveland Police Union that represent rank and file officer was suspended for six days without pay for arguing with another police officer at the union hall. Lord have mercy, Detective Stevus Loomis was issued a suspension on November 11th. Lord have mercy. Man, oh man. I'm just reading between the lines here. It's not the first time that Loomis have been suspended. As a matter of fact, we're on the cutting edge of what's going on. Loomis received a suspension in 2006 for confront, for a confrontation with community activist Art McCoy and for arguing with a lieutenant while on duty, while off duty and attending the Cleveland Browns game. I'm gonna read that to you one more time. Cleveland, Loomis received a suspension in 2006 for confrontation with community activist Art McCoy. I've been in this fight a long time. Y'all better check my record. And for arguing with a lieutenant while off duty at the, attending the Cleveland Browns game. Listen, I'll tell you what happened with, with, uh, uh, with me and Loomis. Loomis just tried to downright disrespect me and block my path from, from walking and everything. And right in front of former police chief McGrath. And my, my brothers were with me, Alvin and Calvin, they said, "What is wrong with this man?" And Chief McGrath came over and tried to, uh, uh, stop it and he was just going off like a crazy man. Of course, I wasn't intimidated, he's bigger than me, but I got more heart than him. So anyway, Chief McGrath asked me, said, "Hey, Art, you and your guys, y'all back off, man, because this man is out of control." I'm telling you, Chief McGrath said it. So out of respect for Chief McGrath, we backed off and let, uh, those that marched ahead, go ahead and then we came in, in, uh, behind. We didn't go nowhere, but we just backed off because Chief McGrath asked us to. So, listen, oh, I know I'm hitting hard today, but listen, here's my opinion, listen. I'm talking from a perspective, I'm not talking from a radio personality perspective. Don't get me wrong about that, don't get this twisted. I'm talking about a perspective from a person on the line. Just like in East Cleveland, I'm not talking from that perspective, radio personality, I'm talking because I live there. I'm talking about Loomis because this happened with me and Loomis. And I said, when that happened, y'all get real close to the radio. And I'm saying this out of love for my friend Steve Loomis. Steve Loomis, check in the rehab. Steve Loomis, check in the rehab, okay? I'm through with it. Let it be said, let it be told. First thing they say is gang member, I don't, I don't, you know, they say that about Sam if he got in trouble, so I, but 20 year old, 21 year old gang member, he was, he'll be executed for the killing of three people in suburban Cleveland barber shop, that's, that's Warrensville Heights. And plotting from the jail to kill a witness who planned to testify against him, a jury has recommended death. Douglas Shine, that's what the young lady was talking about earlier, will become the youngest person on death row in Calhoun County, Lord have mercy. She's, uh, he went in for, in front of young lady that's been in the studio, common pleas Judge Jones Stenenberg, Sennenberg. And she accepted the jury's recommendation, which was announced Saturday. Stenenberg, Sennenberg will formally sentenced Shine at 11:00 a.m. December 5th. I wanna be in that courtroom. I should've been in that courtroom a long time ago, because I'll tell you something. That why that gospel record means so much to me is because when this case first came up, Chalk Line Barber Shop, right there at Warrensville in Harvard. Uh, we was out there with the family to candlelight the vigil and, and, and the families were out there of the young man that was killed in the barber shop. It was really a sad affair. And the mom didn't even wanna come out there, but she came because her son had got killed. Brother Shine, uh, hadn't even been caught then. They said they were scared, that many people were scared to be out there, because they said, "Oh, the boogeyman gonna jump out the bushes and, and do something to us." But we not scared, because we know that we got God on our side, so we stood there and did what we had to do right in front of Chalk Line Barber Shop. Hugged the mother and, and did what we had to do. Then we heard a story about there was a young man outside that, uh, Mr. Shine, who is convicted of killing these people, they said that when he ran out the store, there was this other young man, uh, Barfield, that was outside the barber shop in his car. And he was the brother of the, of the other Barfield that got killed in the bar, in the barber shop. And he, and he pointed his gun at him and laughed and ran on off, say, I say, "I ain't gonna get you this time." And so this young man, the brother of the young man that was killed, uh, was supposed to have been a witness to this murder of that Douglas Shine allegedly committed. And so what happened was that, uh, wouldn't you know it, a few months later, the family called us out again and said, "We need the black man army out again on Warrensville." One street up at the grandmama's house where we had been before, they said the other brother was gunned down and killed as he took his grandbaby in the house and was on his way to court. Which was very strange to us, because we felt like, uh, if you know you have this witness and you know there's, there's, uh, all this danger that you're talking about, it seemed like they, uh, the feds are getting us real clean on this, because I just think that they should've had more protection on this witness. But anyway, to make a long story short, he was gunned down and there we were again. This time, blocked down in front of the grandmama's house. By this time, the FBI had finally got, uh, some sense and they had put, took the grandma and put her in protective custody. Uh, uh, and, but we did the vigil outside the house, the father and everybody came and we did the vigil. We marched down, we marched down Warrensville. Uh, police in tow, chanting, they tried to block, we blocked the whole street off again, chanting about this particular murder. The second brother that got killed. Then what happened was we got back, uh, in, in front of the house, I'll never forget, the young man felt so bad. Somebody that was marching with us, he gave the mama, he went up and gave the grandmother $200. Said, "Well, I know what you've been through" and he gave it to her. And, and so we left. So here's the moral of this story that I wanted to share with the young lady that called in in the beginning and brought this on. A few days later, as I was going out to walk my dog, my little dog, as I walked around the corner, I saw this, uh, this man standing near where I would, the entrance where I would go in and walk my dog. He was standing there and I noticed that he was a strange guy. And something told me, said, "Don't go up in that cut where you usually walk your dog." So I hesitated and I looked at him and he looked at me. I was about 30, 30 feet away from him. And I didn't go any further. I looked him straight in the eye and I called my dog to come back. And as my dog came back and as I crossed another driveway, going back to where I was going, a car pulled in the driveway right where I was at and cut me off. And I thought that was strange. I said, "I'm not gonna go behind that car." Something told me, my instincts were great that day, said, "No, you go in front of that car so you can look them in the eye also." As I went in front of that car and I looked them in the eye, I could see that they was looking at me real hard. And I was looking at them and then I went on past and I went back. I was glad to get away from them and I went back of where I had to go in my house. But I wanna tell you something right now, folks, and this, this, you haven't heard this before, because I haven't talked about it a lot, keep a lot of stuff inside, but those guys actually came to kill me. They came to kill me because of the part of the protest that I was doing, uh, in this particular case of the Chalk Line Barber Shop. So the reason I'm telling you this right now, turn that music up, son, that same music I don't, the reason I'm telling you this right now is because I've held this inside. Turn it up, son. But listen, I know that the only reason those guys didn't kill me that day was because they couldn't, because my God protected me. And I just give God all the praise and all the glory for all I've been through. He looked beyond, turn it up, son, turn it up. He looked beyond my faults and saw my news. Lord have mercy. He said, "If I'm for you, no one can be against you. I am your protection. I'm a witness. I'm a witness. I'm a witness." Oh, hallelujah! Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Thank you for saving me. They said not a, they said not a hair should be hurt on that young man. And I walked away from that incident scratch free. Oh, hallelujah! Oh, hallelujah! I'm gonna give you one more incident. Listen, I don't talk about this often, because I don't like to. But I remember when I was in the jail, I went down to the courtroom where this father was witnessing the guy that killed his daughter, brutalized his daughter and killed his daughter, was getting sentenced to life, getting sentenced to the chair. And I just happened to be there at that time when he jumped over the table and tried to, Terry, uh, killer's head off. And I know Terry because his business was close, uh, next to mine some years ago and I instinctively, I ran toward him and said, "Terry, stop, stop!" And all of a sudden, police is all around and, and it was such a big thing. And I'm just one little guy in the middle of it. And you know what happened? I couldn't believe it. After it was all over, I checked myself out. I said, "I ain't got a scratch." How could I have been in that whole situation like that and come out without a scratch? Lord have mercy. It's not often I testify, but I'm testifying today that I thank the Almighty for the protection that he gave me. And I just asked him to give a little bit of that protection to my little daughter Nawa, who's in University Hospital Rainbow, getting all kinds of tests. Let me go back to the phone call.
How could I have been in that whole situation like that and come out without a scratch?" Lord have mercy. It's not often I testify, but I'm testifying today, that I thank the Almighty for the protection that he gave me, and I just ask him to give a little bit of that protection